Good evening and welcome to the 1,998th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Carrie Buzinski?
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a fun start to the meeting as always. I'm one, and I know Sarah, I gotta give her some kudos on this because I think we order more and more frames to honor different groups in our city, but today we've got a couple of very, very good organizations that we're gonna honor tonight. The first one I'd like to call up is Brenda Allen with Last Day Dog Rescue. So one thing I'd at least like to do is, you know, we've got so many service groups around the city, and if we can, I guess, give a little bit of a front to some of these great organizations and see whatever we can do to help them. I had long conversations with this organization at our Livonia Spree, so if you guys can remember them, right when you walked in front of Eddie Edgar, these guys were there all week telling everything and spreading awesome news on animals. So I'm gonna hand it over to you if you wanna give a quick, give a plug on what you do.
We're Last Day Dog Rescue.
Oh, you know what? Look at that, guys. We're on a loop. I think he sees it. Or we're gonna freak out the Livonia TV before we do this. We're getting some background. Oh, it's some, it is a delay. Let's get that. It's like one of those things.
You could just turn the volume off on that television.
Yeah, if you wanna just turn the volume off, I think we're good. I like this because I like to annoy people, so if I could keep going.
That's what it's like inside his head, and he just hears his own voice.
Listen, I kept going just fine. I was like, "All right, all right." All right, so yes, welcome. Yeah, just tell us a little bit about, you know, what you guys do, how it started, and then I know you guys got a pretty big event coming up, and we can see if our friends over in the administration might be able to share that on Livonia Community.
We're Last Day Dog Rescue. We're a foster-based rescue, so all our animals live in volunteers' homes until we can find them a new home. We've rescued about 8,100 animals. We started in 2007, and we are having a big event. We've been doing more and more fundraisers since COVID. We find that there's more and more dogs out there that need homes, and it takes a lot of money to take care of dogs. So last year, we started our first Paws, Pores &amp; More event. It's an alcohol tasting, but it's also a bunch of activities. We have yard games, we have a group that does agility tricks and training and kind of things, so they're gonna do some shows. We've got some vendors coming in, we've got food trucks, just a little bit of everything, so there's something for everyone to do. And then we have Dearborn Brewery and Traverse City Whiskey are doing a tasting in Wilson Barn that people can pay to participate in as well.
That's awesome. Yeah, no, this is a group that honestly, I have, I have three cats and two yellow labs. I'm completely at the limit for the amount of animals I can have in my house, but no, the amount of work that goes into what they do, you guys are heroes every day, and it's appreciated. You know how, you, I can only imagine how hard it is. I know we spoke about different things in raising animals, but that's God's work, and anything we can do to just let us know. Right now, we would definitely like to present you with this Livonia City Council really cool accommodation and frame, maybe get a group picture with council and you guys, and we'll boost it out. But thank you again. If everybody give a round of applause to this wonderful group. You guys are heroes every day, and it's appreciated. You know how, I can only imagine how hard it is. I know we spoke about different things in raising animals, but that's God's work, and anything we can do to just let us know. Right now, we would definitely like to present you with this Livonia City Council really cool accommodation. So this one is kind of a funny story, because I'm a rock hunter. I collect uper lights, which are those glowing rocks that you find in Lake Superior. You could totally make fun of me, that's fine, but the Michigan Treasure Hunters Group, which is some of our representatives here, invited me to speak on all things rocks and uper lights, and I expected to go to this event and maybe 10 to 15 people, but I show up and there's almost 200. And it was the coolest thing in the world, they go out and they've been around, I'm gonna let them, I'm not gonna steal all the thunder, but my daughter Harper and I were there showing all things rocks, and these guys have been doing this forever. If you come to the corn roast that's each year, you ever see the little sand pit there? They're letting the kids come in and find treasure, but they've been around for a while. It's something that, you know, you wouldn't know it's in the community unless you come up to these events. If you wanna just give a quick rundown on the organization and how you got there, how we can help you, and then we're gonna present you with a cool frame and accommodation.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Jack Rowe. I'm the president of Michigan Treasure Hunters. We've been in existence for 50 years, celebrating this year. Like as Brandon said, we tend to do all of the corn roasts. We've been there for just about every year that they've had it. I know we've been over at Bicentennial, we've been over at Green Meat. It's something that we like to introduce kids to. We also did presentations to like the Oakland County Sportsman Club, and again, they had like 40 students come through and, you know, learned about detecting. A lot of people just enjoy it, you know, and it's a fun thing. Kids are not sitting in front of a computer, so we really enjoy teaching them. We have a meeting once a month, the fourth Tuesday of every month, over at Holy Lutheran on Holy Cross, I'm sorry, thanks, Tom, over on Sixth Mile and between Merman and Middleburg. So, thank you very much.
If you guys, if anybody, look these guys up, honestly, because if you haven't, you know, just something different that's out there, and this group, they don't mess around. They find cool stuff all around Metro Detroit, and very passionate, some of the stuff that, what were they, the cool finds of the day that get auctioned off at the end of the evening, but it's something very cool that's out there, something different to do. So thank you for doing everything for the community, and if you guys want, we can hand this off, get a picture, and keep on rocking.
Thank you very much.
All right, so now, we're gonna jump into, I have on the list here, Mayor, would you wanna talk about the DTE update right now, or do you wanna do it? Is that fine? Oh, perfect, yes.
Yeah, I wanted to introduce your order of business, I suppose.
Yeah, are you talking on just a new item for general audience communication? So we're gonna get to that in a few, I'll make sure I call you up at that time. We can probably, Mr. Roraf is our presentation with Mr. Evans about our tree inventory. Now, you did tell Carson he's got a half hour to speak?
Well, I said 45 minutes, but yeah, we can trim it down.
The floor is yours.
Thank you for having us, Don Roraf, DPW. As you mentioned, we are super proud to have engaged in a program with Carson, but really the program is through Catalyst Leadership Circle, or CLC. It's a program funded by Eagle, it's through their catalyst communities, but it's operationally run by U of M Graham Sustainability Institute. Participation is open to communities that have achieved silver or gold certification in the Michigan Green Communities Challenge, which Livonia is currently silver certified, and I would like to recognize Jim Baringhouse, who was our chair for the Greenleaf Commission, for bringing this before the commission and the department. Some of the goals that the Catalyst Leadership Circle shoots and strives for are to help CLC members achieve sustainability goals by providing students to help complete and advance any project that those communities might be working on with sustainability. Secondly, to develop and train those students to get ready to enter the workforce. And third is to produce a shareable, deliverable product that other communities outside of the CLC community can use. And at this time, I'd just like to introduce the team that was part of this. We have Doug Moore, Assistant Director for DPW, Tricia Gabriel, our Superintendent of DPW, Jim Baringhouse, as I mentioned, is the Chair of our Greenleaf Commission. We had a technical advisor that was on our team from the DNR, her name is Carrie Gray. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. And then the man of the hour, Carson Evans here, was our fellow. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Carson to kinda tell you a quick overview of himself and the program, and then we've got about a minute and a half overview of the program itself.
Sounds great, thank you. Come on up, Carson, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good, good.
He's got the right shirt on, go blue.
Again, my name is Carson Evans. I was a fellow with the Graham Sustainability Institute through the University of Michigan this past summer. The fellowship's a part of the Catalyst Communities Initiative, which is funded through the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle. I had the pleasure of working with the city of Livonia to analyze and communicate some street tree data that the city received this year. So the Street Tree Dashboard is one of the deliverables I put together and is designed exclusively for Livonia city officials. This powerful tool provides a detailed and visual overview of the street trees, which offers insights to support smart strategic decision-making. By exploring key aspects such as tree species, health status, and locations, the dashboard is key for effective urban forestry management. If we could get that video going. Thank you. That the city received this year. So the Street Tree Dashboard is one of the deliverables I put together and is designed exclusively for Livonia city officials. This powerful tool provides a detailed and visual overview of the street trees, which offers insights to support smart strategic decision-making. By exploring key aspects such as tree species, health status, and locations, the dashboard is key for effective urban forestry management. If we could get that video going.
There are all sorts of audio issues tonight.
Well, there was audio there, but I can just talk over it, I guess, live. So this is the Story Map now, but the dashboard, which was shown previously, ensures tree health through monitoring of the health of the street trees, identifying areas that require maintenance or intervention, maximizes resources by leveraging up-to-date data to allocate resources efficiently for tree planting, pruning, and other forestry activities, and boosts urban planning by making well-informed decisions about planting and maintaining trees to ensure a vibrant and balanced and healthy urban forest. Urban forests are essential to the health of our cities, offering numerous benefits such as cleaner air, cooler temperatures, and improved mental well-being. However, many residents are unaware of these advantages or the reasons behind the city's forest management practices, which is why we've created this Story Map, which is an engaging and interactive tool that combines maps, texts, and images to communicate this vital information effectively. The Story Map will guide you through the importance of urban trees, showcases local government initiatives, and encourages community involvement. We've gathered extensive data from local government documents and external resources to provide a comprehensive overview. You'll find the sections detailing economic and environmental benefits of trees, changes in the street tree inventory over time, and efforts to manage and enhance the urban forest. By exploring the Story Map, you'll gain a deeper understanding of how urban forests contribute to our city's sustainability and how you can get involved in preserving and enhancing these green spaces. These documents in tandem shine a spotlight on an overlooked city resource. An increased interest in our urban forest yields greater economic and environmental benefits for all. Thank you.
Carson, right now, let's give you a round of applause.
So one last, sorry, just, we're gonna roll live with this, hopefully by Friday. We're planning on tomorrow, but as you can see, we're looking at, hopefully it's not a niche all over, but this should go live. We wanted to make sure it got presented to council and the residents at this meeting, so we're hoping that that's out on the website going live with everything, and Carson's done a fabulous job.
No, this is just a touch base.
As you can see, he wings it as needed.
Well, I can tell you, Carson, I mean, going even back when State Rep Lori Polhutsky, I think we had a half million dollar grant from the state to improve our tree canopy, and then Mr. Moore and the Tree Committee, I was on it at that time, we got a tree ordinance, and I knew the biggest thing was to get a tree inventory, and Carson, I mean, the whole team, but you nailed it out, this is great. And we've got our members of Greenleaf here, I think, and do we get silver this year for the MML challenge? So again, we're making strides in sustainability for everybody that's out there, and it's things like these that might not seem like a lot, but they give us the tools that we need to, you know, benchmark and go forward to see where our canopy is. So this work is valuable, I'm sure it was very tedious, but the work is, it doesn't go unlooked at. I mean, this is incredible what you did, the amount of painstaking work. I'm gonna open up the council, if council has anything else, or if you just wanna say some thanks to the team, please feel free to jump in.
I'll just say, one, you did a beautiful presentation. It's not easy to talk in front of a public audience, so thank you for coming before us today, thank you for all the work you did. I can say that Livonians love our trees. You know, it's something that residents reach out to us about regularly, so just know that your work is valued, appreciated, and will definitely be used.
Thank you.
And then right now, not to leave you out, this is a surprise, we're gonna bring you back up, buddy, and we're gonna give you this incredible accommodation. This is the least we can do, I mean, honestly, thank you for everything and time and effort you put into this. Let's all give this guy a big, huge round of applause. know if it's streaming live from our viewers online or at home, but I know we're working on it. Up next, we're gonna hand it over to the mayor. Mayor, how are you? We're gonna talk all things DTE.
Yes, thank you, council, and thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I do wanna step back to the item that you just had presented before you, because I know you referenced the fact that this has been a long time coming, even since your days serving on the Tree Committee. This effort actually began back in 1998. That's how long we've been waiting to get our arms around a database and inventory of our trees in the city of Livonia. Back in 1988, then-council member Vail Van Der Sluit put forward the Tree City concept, and, you know, we all jumped on board, because much like Councilwoman Buzinski said, Livonia does appreciate and value its trees. At that point in time, you know, this was just a way to recognize the fact that we were a city rich with this one particular resource. And Councilwoman Van Der Sluit went on to become the city clerk. She continued to champion that effort, and as a result, we've seen a really robust effort to make sure that we not only know what species of trees that we have in the city, but where they're at. There came a time back in around 2006, 2007, we learned that the city of New York had a database similar to the one that we now have as a result of Carter's work, and we were green with envy. And we really wanted a chance to get our arms around what it was that we had in terms of species. We had the Admiral Ashbore that had attacked a number of trees in our community, and we lost a great number of trees as a result of that. We felt like we would have been much better prepared had we known what species of trees we had specifically where in our neighborhoods. Now, we did a great job as a forestry team combating that invasive species, but we're even better prepared now because of the work that Carter did. So in addition to now our ability to really understand where this resource resides at in our community comes a much stronger effort should we ever have to battle some type of an invasive species again in our community. So Carter, your work is greatly, greatly appreciated. Council, I wanna thank you for spending some time today learning about some of the big projects the city's been working on, and not to be outdone by everything that the Forestry Division is doing. Our own department, under Brian Kahn's leadership in emergency preparedness, as you all know, has been working really diligently with DTE on behalf of residents. Again, this is a project that didn't just begin yesterday, it began back in 2021 when we had DTE coming in on a very regular basis, talking to us about their resources, and at that time, let's face it, the failure of many of their resources. DTE met with us as a city leadership team beginning in 2021, and as early as last month, we met with them again, and we've been talking about some really critical things, and I know you all know what these issues are, because they affect our residents and your constituents. We're talking about improving our energy reliability, especially on Livonia's worst-performing circuits. We now have our arms around where those worst-performing circuits reside. We're talking a lot about not only how to improve that circuitry with, you know, the trimming of trees, forgive me, Carter, but in looking at how do we bury lines? So there are a whole host of tactics that we're looking at working with DTE and pushing them to advance in our community. We're looking at identifying critical infrastructure in our communities such as senior housing and any of the long-term congregate living care facilities in the city, and making sure that DTE knows where those are, so that when we get into a situation and we do lose power, that DTE knows where they need to go first. And that's been a missing piece in DTE's ability to critically respond in any number of communities, but Livonia has been on the cutting edge of making sure that we've got that data on their radar screen. So we're one of the few cities that has them embedded in our emergency preparedness department. We are improving communications between both of our organizations, therefore improving communications with our customers. We are regularly talking about to DTE about where they're missing at. Where is it that we're hearing from their customers first and they're not? That's a miss when that happens, and we're bringing these issues to their attention so that they can firm up their communication systems and their structures. We're regularly posting links on our website so that our, their customers are not coming to us for answers, because the answers don't happen quickly enough. It happens quicker if you can get to the people at DTE who can actually fix the problems. And there are a whole host of other things that we've been working on. But the exciting project that we wanted to talk to you about tonight is a pilot project. Again, Livonia is the first community, we're gonna be leading the way on this pilot project, and we are gonna be bringing a generator distribution system to the city. This is a way so that during power outages, if you run out of power, it looks like it's gonna be for an extended period of time, you could come and get a generator from DTE to power up your house. So like Councilwoman Toy, who has lost so many refrigerators of food, I can't even tell you how many times she has called my office, with umpteen residents just like her that have lost refrigerators of food, there are now going to be generators available. So our role in this process is nothing other than providing space. So today, I signed a memorandum of understanding with DTE, providing the space available for generator distribution, so at the tail end of a storm, when things go down and it doesn't look like power's gonna be coming back so soon, we're gonna be able to set up an area and offer them an area to begin this distribution of these generators. It's simply that, just providing space. But none of this would have come about if that partnership with DTE hadn't been secured over the course of the past three or four years, since 2021, when we first sat down and began discussions, and we talked about really practical ways that DTE could step up to the challenge of power reliability. And this was one of those ideas that came out of that roundtable discussion. So we're really proud of the fact that we're gonna be leading the charge on this, and I'm gonna let Brian Kahn talk to you a little bit about some of the details. A lot of this falls under Brian's domain as Director of Emergency Preparedness, so that when emergencies kick in, Brian is our first person that reaches out to DTE to let them know the status of the emergency and the impact that it's having on our Livonia residents. So Brian, I wanna thank you for your work on this project. Again, Livonia leads the way with a powerful team of leaders right by its side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council, very nice to see you, everybody, tonight. Good evening. Again, Brian Kahn, Director of Emergency Preparedness for the city of Livonia. This is just one more step towards the process, and we talk about emergency preparedness and being prepared for anything that may befall us, it's part of the emergency management portion of it, so when something happens, what can we do? In today's society, there's just so many different things that can actually affect us, and as we think, see things come along here, and we understand, you know, when we start getting these power outages, what can we do to at least put something in place before we can get the power back? So we've worked in partnership with DT, the mayor's office has set up these communications with DT, they've brought them in, we work closely with their emergency management portion on their side with their incident command process to make sure that we can continue to build on and improve the reliability during storms or during any other type of emergency that might befall us when we lose power. So this is just one more step towards that management process of the emergency preparedness side. So I'd like to thank the mayor's office and council and everybody else that's participated in this, so it's just been a great undertaking.
No, it's definitely cool, and thanks for showing up and telling us about that, I'm sure there'll be information popping out there. It's one of the resiliencies of our city, always thinking outside the box, and while DTE, know our leaders have been really fighting DTE with formalized capital improvement plans going forward, and this is just an extra step to help us get to that way. You know, we're not gonna get everything all the time, but this is an innovative way to try to bridge the gap, so kudos to everybody, congratulations, and thanks for rolling out to residents. All right, I think I had here the last update is from Ms. Edson for the One City One Book, if she is here, if you're ready to roll, and then we're gonna jump right into the consent agenda. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Just wanted to come and announce the Livonia Public Library's selection for the 2024 One City One Book, which is of Time and Turtles: Mending the World Shell by Shattered Shell, which is by author and nationalist, and this was a National Book Award finalist by Cy Montgomery. The book is described as elegantly blending science, memoir, and philosophy, this compassionate portrait of injured turtles and their determined rescue.
It's simply that, just providing space. But none of this would have come about if that partnership with DTE hadn't been secured over the course of the past three or four years, since 2021, when we first sat down and began discussions. And we talked about really practical ways that DTE could step up to the challenge of power reliability. And this was one of those ideas that came out of that roundtable discussion. So, we're really proud of the fact that we're going to be leading the charge on this. And I'm going to let Brian Kahn talk to you a little bit about some of the details. A lot of this falls under Brian's domain as Director of Emergency Preparedness so that when emergencies kick in, Brian is our first person that reaches out to DTE to let them know the status of the emergency and the impact that it's having on our Livonia residents. So, Brian, I want to thank you for your work on this project. Again, Livonia leads the way with a powerful team of leaders right by its side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, counsel. Very nice to see you, everybody, tonight. Good evening. Again, Brian Kahn, Director of Emergency Preparedness for the city of Livonia. This is just one more step towards the process. When we talk about emergency preparedness and being prepared for anything that may befall us, it's part of the emergency management portion of it. So, when something happens, what can we do? In today's society, there's just so many different things that can actually affect us. And as we see things come along here and we understand, you know, when we start getting these power outages, what can we do to at least put something in place before we can get the power back? So, we've worked in partnership with DT. The mayor's office has set up these communications with DT. They've brought them in. We work closely with their emergency management portion on their side with their incident command process to make sure that we can continue to build on and improve the reliability during storms or during any other type of emergency that might befall us when we lose power. So, this is just one more step towards that management process of the emergency preparedness side. So, I'd like to thank the mayor's office and counsel and everybody else that's participated in this. So, it's just been a great undertaking.
No, it's definitely cool. And thanks for showing up and telling us about that. I'm sure there'll be information popping out there. It's one of the resiliencies of our city, always thinking outside the box. And while DT, I know our leaders have been really fighting DT with formalized capital improvement plans going forward, and this is just an extra step to help us get to that way. You know, we're not going to get everything all the time, but this is an innovative way to try to bridge the gap. So, kudos to everybody. Congratulations and thanks for rolling out to residents.
Thank you.
All right. I think I had here the last update is from Ms. Edson for the One City One Book, if she is here, if you're ready to roll. And then we're going to jump right into the consent agenda. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Just wanted to come and announce the Livonia Public Library's selection for the 2024 One City One Book, which is of Time and Turtles: Mending the World Shell by Shattered Shell, which is by author and nationalist, and this was a National Book Award finalist by Cy Montgomery. The book is described as elegantly blending science, memoir, and philosophy. This compassionate portrait of injured turtles and their determined rescuers invites us all to slow down and slip into turtle time. So, all of you have a copy. I hope that you will join us in the conversation. And you also, inside of that book, have a copy of the featured programs that will be going on at the library. So, specifically, I hope you will join for the book discussion. You've received your copies in plenty of advance notice. I checked my copy out today. I want everybody to know that there are plenty of copies available at both locations. We also have them available in an ebook and e-audiobooks, both on our Libby and Hoopla apps. So, come check it out. I will say I'm only 30 pages in. I just got it today because I remembered to check out my copy today before coming here. And I've already learned some very interesting things, and she is a, has a very good way of writing, especially for nonfiction topics. Also, for those of you here in the audience today, I did bring a few printed copies. They're available on the table just outside of the auditorium, along with a sign for our signature program, which is a Zoom talk with the actual author, Cy Montgomery, which was partially sponsored by Bill Brown Ford. And then we also wanted to say thank you to UPS Store 3011 on Five Mile for helping us print some new materials and the Communications Department for helping us to update the lovely logo for the One City One Book program. And that's...
No, this is...
Well, I will say, sorry, I forgot to say, while this program and series of programs that you have in your printed brochure are targeted towards adults, we always welcome all of our, all ages of readers to participate. So, the Children's Department does have a few fun activities for our younger members of the community.
That's great. Always something fun happening at the libraries. This is extraordinary. Counsel, does anybody want to chime in on it? Seeing none, again, anything we can do to help, you just let us know. But this, we got our book. Everybody's got it. We're going to do some reading, and we'll report back. But thanks again, and a great program.
Great. We look forward to seeing you guys there.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to start pretty much the meeting and go, "Welcome to the 1,998th regular meeting of Livonia City Council." This is a voting meeting. Meeting minutes of this meeting will be approved that the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, August 26, believe it or not, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Buzinski?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Donavich?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here.
And we show all seven members are present. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 15, 2024. Counsel? So moved. Second. Motion by Donavich, support by Jolly. Any comments from the audience on our regular meeting minutes from July 15? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the minutes pass, seven to zero. I'm going to move right into audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, you get three minutes. Name an address for the record and make your way to one of the podiums. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Okay, is this too loud? I don't know. First time I've done this.
You're fine.
Okay.
You're good.
So, my name is Megan Patterson. My address is 19275 Bainbridge, Livonia 48152. Sorry. It's a flip zip code from my last one, literally just the last two numbers switched. So, I'm a semi-new resident. We just moved here in December of 2022 and then actually bought the house in December of '22, moved in April of 2023. So, what I'm here about is the Hillcrest Park in our neighborhood. So, it's within our square mile. It's the only park within our square mile. All the other neighborhood parks in our area are across one of the mile roads or Middle Bowler Merriman. I have two young boys, and of course, right, they love to go to the park. Now, the problem with Hillcrest Park that I am really here about is, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but the playground is extremely far into the back. It is a large field with a beautiful, there's a pathway that you can go walk through in the woods. It's beautiful. But the playground that is present is in the farthest corners of a large, massive field. You cannot, there's no pathway, so there's no cement. It's not wheelchair accessible. It is not stroller accessible. It's barely wagon accessible. Anybody who may have a handicap would very much struggle to get to the playground itself. I mean, even able-bodied people, I would say, you know, it's a walk, it's a hike, when the field floods, when it's wet, whatever it is, it's a struggle. So, I did some digging on it, and I've actually contacted a few of you on it. We've contacted the Parks and Recreation Department. My husband's actually coming from the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting where he spoke to them about this, as Carrie had recommended that we do. What I found from the Parks and Recreation Department, what really concerns me is that the reason that the playground is so far back is because there were alternate plans for that playground. I was told maybe about 15 years ago, obviously, I wasn't a resident, I'm not aware, the plans were changed because of resident concerns. They didn't want the soccer field in the parking lot, is what I was told. So, then the playground was just left. And so, my kind of question is, I understand playgrounds are, you know, the playground equipment itself is another story, the upkeep of it. But some of those things, I do think it's impacted because it is so far back and because it is inaccessible. The neighbors can't get to it. You can't keep an eye on the kids who are drawing pictures of graffiti because it's so far back, you wouldn't even be able to tell that they're back there. You can't, yeah, you can't, you just can't get to it right. And so, my thought is, where did, I know the funds are hard to fix those things, where did the money from the parking lot go? And I know it was 15 years ago, right? But I would have hoped that at that time, and it seems like it obviously was not done, that it wasn't thought, oh, we should, if we're not doing the parking lot, if we're not doing the soccer field, let's at least make this playground accessible for the people who are here, if we're just leaving it here. And that wasn't done. And so, and, you know, I complained, and I was told, bring it forward, bring it here, and, you know, try and rally our neighborhood.
But that's time for the three.
Okay.
No, you knocked it out. That's, you know, a lot of us, what we do, we have council communication that follows the normal, general audience. But I can tell you that if it's been 15 years, then it's probably due from potential new CIP. We'll try to get you an answer to see where it's scheduled in there.
I know that answer already, 2027.
Okay.
So, it's out there.
But no, you, we have your information. I know Carrie does, you mentioned. So, if we can, we'll get you some information. Obviously, the good route is going to Parks and Rec Commission, and we'll see what we can do. But obviously, you know, we appreciate the concern.
All right.
We appreciate you coming out and hanging on with us, and we're going to get you some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Good evening, Ms. Martin. How are you?
Well, thank you. Christopher Martin, and a resident of the great state of Michigan. I've got a little bit of feedback here, I think. So, anyway, just want to talk about something that the mayor brought up, trees. And I know a little bit about the ones along Plymouth Road. Those are put in by the Plymouth Road Development Authority years ago. That was John Nagy, who was, I believe, was given the title of Director of the Plymouth Road Development Authority. Before that, he was Planning Director, which is a job that Mark Terramian has currently. Those trees were planted underneath the electrical wires. So, now that they've been trimmed, they don't look all that attractive, okay? They look pretty butchered, to be quite honest. Same thing along the north side of Five Mile. So, we just, you know, I like trees. We're a tree city. That's fine, okay? There are many trees that stop growing or slow down their process of growing between like eight and 10 feet, okay? They refer to them as an ornamental or a decorative tree. And maybe we should consider that. But also, the biggest thing is, let's not put them, I mean, a child would know not to do that. Don't plant something that's going to grow pretty tall underneath the power lines. And that's exactly what has taken place along Plymouth Road. And it's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. As far as DT, never had a problem with DT. My problem is with, is with a Davy tree, okay? Who trim the trees, okay? And they don't take trees down, they trim them so they look pretty, pretty bad when they get done trimming them. It'd be better if they just took the whole thing down, okay? That's the way I look at it, try to talk them into doing that at various times. They don't operate like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to, is it okay if we go right to the council communications, or do you want to address it right now?
Just...
Yeah.
Go for it. Mr. Martin.
Oh, you had a...
Mr. Martin.
Is there a question?
No, no questions.
Oh, well, then, it's audience communication. Come on, Lori.
Just a real good comment. Thank you for bringing some of that forward. I had an experience with that.
It's simple. A child would know.
Okay. I had an experience with the trees, and they took down a 60-year-old lilac bush in my yard. I'm not happy about that. And, you know, it was careless, and I think we have to have more caution when we go into people's yards, whether it's bushes, animals, people, whatever. It was uncontrollable. You know, so, I mean, I don't mean to get sentimental about it, but it's been there a long time, and it really bothered me that nobody even, you know, said, "I'm sorry," or put a note in my mailbox or on my door, whatever. So, thank you for your comments tonight.
No, I understand your concern over that, okay? My concern is, take the tree down because it's affecting, I'm thinking of other people. It's affecting the neighborhood when the power goes out. Take the tree down, okay? I'm not in love with the tree.
Right.
Take it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. King, good evening.
Steve King, 33950 Coventry. First of all, shout out to Lori Miller for the election. She's probably been awake for two days. Hopefully, you'll get a chance to do a recap, I hope. All right, I just want to share a story. I went to the Michigan train station, and I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to go there, but that structure is awe-inspiring. And you walk in there, and what really jumps out at you is the skill tradesmen, craftsmanship, and the pride in their work. And at the level of pride and craftsmanship, that level of pride and craftsmanship used to be the norm. When I was growing up in the 50s, 60s, and 70s in Coventry Gardens, I watched, I had neighbors that were builders, and I watched them build their own house. And at that time, the builder, the actual builder, led the crew. So, he had the blueprint, crossed the hood of his truck, and he was leading the crew and swinging the hammer along with them. And they all had great pride in their work and exhibited great craftsmanship. That is not the case today. Today's builder is motivated by one thing, only one thing, profit. Maximize profit. And they do that by not using the best materials. And the same is true for people that do, that you hire to do work in the city. Their businesses maximize profit. They use the cheapest for the, the cheapest material they can get away with. The only tool a builder today has is the cell phone. That's what a builder today, his tool is the cell phone, and he uses it to communicate with the only English member speaking of the crew. And that is the truth if you walk around and you can see all of this stuff happen. Now, I share this story only because I believe it's incumbent upon council, planning commission, ZBA, and all other government oversight bodies, because that's what you are. You're an oversight body that protects the public. It's up to you to demand only the best quality material and the best craftsmanship in every single structure built in Livonia. I want to tell you something about that train station. There's no vinyl windows in the train station. Now, Matty Maroon might have put some in, but they removed them. And finally, to wrap it up, tomorrow, Steve King and the Diddly's will take the stage behind the rec center. So, we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any further audience communication? Oh, perfect. I'm going to go to them. I'm going to go right to you. The floor is yours. Good to see you.
Hi, Vicki Johnson, 32209 Jameson Court. You recent, the council recently okayed a waiver for St. Rafka Hualabaloo that's going to be going on, I think, this weekend. And the noise ordinance problem, I, you know, I live behind the rec center, two blocks east of Hubbard, and the noise after nine, 10 o'clock is ridiculous. So, if you could have just asked them to turn the volume down, keep the music, but turn the volume down, that would have been nice. Thanks.
Thank you. And we'll note that because they'll probably be back next year and adding the decibels. But thanks for letting us know. Any other, oh, we're going to you. The floor is yours. Name an address.
I'm Colleen Jackson Peterson. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to address the council this evening about the new train development. Where we go. The primary failure of this new system is there's no preference for people to arrive on time to their medical appointments. John has been taking this service for 22 years, and the problems in the past were minimal compared to now. Two days a week, he travels to the recovery project, which is 5.5 to 6.5 miles from our home, depending on the route. The app will notify you the day before and the morning of the bus arrival time. For example, pickup is set for 8:20 to 8:40, but the bus arrives at our home at 8:50. Okay? And that's for a 9 o'clock therapy appointment. While he's not going to get there at 9 o'clock if they're picking him up at 10 minutes. And we live at 6 in Newbury. Okay? So, if someone logs on and he's picked up, your setup, your set arrival time gets pushed back. So, he usually arrives five to 10 minutes late for therapy. You can't get extra time for therapy. You're late, you're late. Coming home is the same thing. The recovery project is at Plymouth and Hubbard. If someone wants to be picked up at Target after shopping, the pickup time becomes adjusted. The pickup time is 10 to 10:20. The bus arrives at 10:30. So, he's been out there waiting for a half an hour, and the day he arrives home at 11:10 from a 10 o'clock ending date of therapy for a five to six-mile bus trip. I have been told, under ADA compliance, that passenger can be on the bus for one hour. I would ask you if this is acceptable to any of you to be finished at 10 o'clock and arrive home at 11:10. I've been told that precise times cannot be booked out for drivers, and the office is telling me there's nothing that can be done. The app runs the route and directs the drivers. If you have medical appointments, you are in the mix with everyone else. We are frustrated. Once again, I found out about these delays by phone calls. I was never told that you could get text messages about the arrival times. I was, we were never informed about this live-and-go program until I called the office. They added my phone and to get text messages. I feel that the lack of communication is, and this not being able to get to where you need to be in a timely manner is unacceptable, and it's very frustrating. And I know that I've spoken to Carrie and Brandon, I've spoken to you, and that this is going to committee. But I think this has been running for a month, and it, we're not seeing any improvement.
And that's time. No, thank you. And thank you for coming today to express that.
I wanted everybody in the council to hear our concerns. Because I, I mean, I've shared it with Carrie and with you, Brandon, but I felt...
No, I think it's good.
... strongly that everybody at council needs to know that we had a great service. strongly that everybody at council needs to know that we had a great service and now, I mean, everybody's just saying, "We can't do anything about it." They're like hands-off.
Yeah. We'll get you, we'll get you some information. I'm sorry that you're having these issues and, uh, we'll work with administration.
I'll be there at committee meetings. When you sign up, you can count on seeing my face at every meeting.
We're gonna want you there. We're gonna want the insight.
Okay.
Yeah. It's already in a committee and, uh, Carrie's in the process with Laura to schedule a date.
Okay.
Once that's set, we'll make sure you, uh, get some communication on it. It'll be published too, but, uh, we'll see what we can find out.
Sarah told me that she would send me an email too, so thank you.
If Sarah told you, she's, you're gonna get that assurance. But thanks for coming out and telling us. Sorry about the issues.
Thanks.
Any further audience communications? For items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to council updates. Vice President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So, I just, a couple of quick shout-outs to, uh, our community. The one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth, uh, St. Andrew's Society Highland Games were this past weekend. I wanted to give Kathy Hasi a shout-out for putting that on. Uh, Mr. McCullough and I had the opportunity to be part of the opening ceremonies along with two hundred bagpipes, I believe. So, uh, that was a great time. Um, another shout-out to the Livonia Police Officers Association. They had their charity golf outing on Monday. Uh, Mr. McCullough and I, again, were partners in the golf outing with our spouses. That was, that was a lot of fun. Um, and then I also, this is a little bit about a week late, but, um, July was Disability Pride Month. And I did just want to acknowledge that in commemoration of the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act back in July of nineteen-ninety. Um, and really, my hope is that citizens recognize the invaluable contributions of all of our citizens with disabilities and that we can foster an environment of respect and greater understanding. And I think that kind of is a nice segue from what we were just talking about. Um, and then final, and I'm sure Clerk, Clerk Miller will get to this, but, um, I had a very fun, uh, voting experience yesterday in the fourth precinct. And, uh, let's just say I was testing the precinct workers a little bit, not on purpose, but they, they passed the test and they, uh, I told them I would brag about them to Clerk Miller. So, your poll workers did a great job yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Toye.
Mr. Chair, um, on a, a more, um, somber note, um, and I'm not sure if you recognize this yet because probably some of you were not born, uh, but our dear favorite, one of our very favorite council members has passed away. Um, I had that terrible virus, so I wasn't here on May tenth, but Jerry Brown, who was well-known in our community and did just tons of work, um, served in the Navy, served at Ford Motor Company for forty-four years. He was a government relations person. When I was in Lansing, he was very effective up there in promoting Ford and, and their needs and, and knew the Livonia community back and forth. He served here for some fourteen to sixteen years. Couldn't find it on the website for some reason. They don't have our years of service on there. At least, I couldn't find it and that doesn't mean anything because I'm not real good when it comes to those things. But I wanted to recognize Jerry Brown and his family. He's survived by his wife and, um, also Sharon Brown, as well as his daughter Kelly, uh, his daughter and his son Sheldon Brown, who used to work at Charmin's Party Store. And I remember those kids when they were in feety pajamas. And I know they were Livonia residents for many years. Jerry was just a pillar of this community, served with people like Jerry Raymond and Pete Ventura and some of the old timers. Um, and I was just a kid, by the way, when those guys were there. But I always looked up to them because they did such a fabulous job of establishing this community from what we're seeing today with the industrial belt and, uh, the various, uh, plats that they did under subdivisions and how they paid attention to our police department and our fire department made them top priorities. So, we're gonna miss Jerry. Um, he was eighty-four years young and, uh, if we could call for a few moments of silence in recognition of a former colleague, I'd appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Amen.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toye? Anything for, Councilwoman Bazinski?
Yes, um, I guess a couple of things. Um, one, again, Clerk Miller, a well-run election. I did early voting, um, at the Livonia Housing Commission, seamless, not rainy day, easy to do with the kids. So, uh, it's a great setup that you have there. Um, to our, our public comments regarding the Livonia Community Transit Program slash live-and-go, um, you know, I, I am a supporter and advocate for, uh, transit. I commend the administration for trying to be innovative and progressive and, and moving the city forward and creating a more accessible program. However, I think it's equally important that we are mindful of the people who have come to rely in this program for decades and the services that it offers to our most vulnerable residents. Um, and so, as it was mentioned, we are putting this in, it's already in committee. Um, so I asked the chair, uh, my colleague, Councilwoman Toye, um, if we can schedule a meeting. So, we will be scheduling a meeting for either late this month or the first week of September to go over, um, what the changes have been. Um, I agree that we can do a better job in communicating what the program currently looks like, what the changes have been, um, and kind of do a walkthrough so that we're all educated on, um, what live-and-go, how its services will be provided to our community. Um, I think that's incredibly important to have that clear communication. Also, to make sure that where there are holes and deficits, that we're not ignoring them, but we're looking for solutions to make sure that our residents, again, can rely on it for the very important services that they've been doing for decades. So, please note that that information will be forthcoming, um, and it is a priority to me. Um, I had met, uh, those residents and others who brought this to my attention at my last coffee hour, um, in July. My most, my upcoming coffee hour is on Saturday, August seventeenth at eleven o'clock. Um, I host these at the Civic Center Library. They're open to the public. I give a general city update, answer any questions you have. We also have guest speakers and topics. And so, the topic, um, for August will be the arts in Livonia. So, we'll be talking about things like Friends of Livonia Art, public, the Public Art Program, um, that we approved earlier this year, um, and other things. So, I invite you to come. I offer light refreshments. Kids are welcome. Um, and to our other, uh, member of the audience, Megan Patterson, who came and spoke, I just want to say thank you for coming. We did have communications prior to this meeting. Uh, but she brought her boys here, um, and noted that she did so to, uh, demonstrate civic duty. And so, I just think that's important to know. And I wanted to commend her for, um, really getting involved and stepping up and, and showing her kiddos, um, what it's like for public service and civic engagement. I think that's really important.
Thank you. Councilwoman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to acknowledge today is National Purple Heart Day. And for the folks, uh, watching or in the audience, the Purple Heart is for our service members who were wounded in combat. If you know, uh, Livonia has a lot of veterans, a lot of folks that have served in the military, and, uh, we have a few in the audience tonight, a few on council. There is a lot of, uh, military involvement in our community. And it's especially important to acknowledge those folks that unfortunately, uh, were hurt, uh, while serving. We do got the greatest country in the world. We're very fortunate to have a lot of patriotic Americans that have served with their blood, sweat, and tears to this country. So, well, I acknowledge those, uh, those folks that have served. And, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
Um, I just want to touch base on, I've got some business items. There's new data, um, on items, uh, six and eleven. Uh, we are celebrating someone's birthday on August twentieth. Councilwoman Morgan, and we're gonna all sing happy birthday at the next meeting. So, we're getting you there.
I'll bring a cake.
Birthday.
It's not his birthday.
Then I'm gonna take you out for a fake birthday then. That's fine. Um, one thing, and I know we've all touched base on it, but, uh, obviously, the new election rules and laws that went into place, our clerk department has been learning and wheeling and, and adding new process, uh, probably pulling their hair out, needing a breather. But, you know, our Clerk Miller is here right now after, you know, the, the primary, um, with the early voting. And, and there's a lot to be said with the new policies and procedures that have been put in place. And, uh, you know, the clerk's department has been doing an incredible job with everyone there and deserves a lot of gratitude, um, for keeping, um, the integrity of the elections, you know, the right direction. So, uh, Lori, anything you guys name, but great job. I know you guys got a big one coming up, but this was probably a precursor. So, um, we've got one of the best teams in the world. So, congratulations.
Thank you. It was truly a team effort. We had a lot of help from a lot of city departments. We deployed over five hundred employees yesterday. Everything went well. We wrapped it up at about two in the morning. So, a little tired and groggy today, but it was a great team effort. And I, I would like to give a shout-out to my staff. They worked incredibly hard and they came together as a team and we did things we had never done before with great success. So, thank you.
No, great job. You know, let, let everybody know. I'm sure I can share it from council that, uh, awesome job.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Toye?
If I may, I just wanted to commend you on bringing these community groups forward. Uh, I know when I was president, we did that a lot and gave out accommodations. I think that's very important for people. Um, on a sad note, um, when I came home from council , uh, last two weeks ago, I found my, um, beloved dog, uh, dead on the floor and, uh, didn't expect that. And so, I was able to get a rescue, uh, a couple of weeks later. And so, we now have Eddie Toy. Um, he's registered at, um, let's see, Saks Fifth Avenue. Uh, he's got that highbrow taste. And, uh, he's kind of a cool dog. Um, but I just, I, I didn't know they existed in Livonia. And I've been this pretty eight-hundred years and, you know, it was so refreshing to see a group come in and some service I just had to use and wanted to use. And so, I went to West Bloomfield, of all places, instead of my own city. But, so it's great that you're doing this and the council. And, uh, I, I just want to commend you. Thank you. From a personal experience, thank you.
No problem. You know what?
Yes, sir.
It's something that, that helps the community, just as you said. It, it breaks the silos. It puts communication out there. Just the amount of service groups is, is incredible, you know? And even tomorrow, we got Mr. King and the Diddly's there. I'm gonna call you Mr. King and the Diddly's now, but they're rocking and rolling. I mean, we live in a great city.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to do this. I know we gotta get the evening going on, but, uh, I, I did, uh, I would like to mention that, uh, our DPW unfortunately experienced a loss this week. One of our city employees, one of our consigliere staff, uh, did pass away, um, uh, kind of, uh, out of nowhere suddenly. And this happened this week. So, I did want to acknowledge that. Um, for his privacy, I'm not gonna mention their name, but I did want to acknowledge your family and the DPW staff, Mr. Doug Moore and all of you folks. I know you guys have worked with, with this individual for, for a long time now. So, and it's always tough when this, one of our city employees passed away like that. So, I did want to acknowledge that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. President, or Mr. Chair, yeah. If I may, real quick, and I forgot part of that story. And, um, I had just left Jim and Brandon out from City Hall when I left, went home, and I immediately called, um, a friend of mine that runs Tail Waggers. But, um, then I called my friend Rob because I know he pulled deer out of people's yards. So, I, I want to thank Rob a lot because Rob was just right there. And thank you, Rob, again. I want publicly, just want to say God bless you and thank you very much.
That's wonderful. All right. Um, my last shout-out, and I promise we'll get on the business after this, but tomorrow I'm leaving, um, Livonia to head to Buffalo to coach Team Michigan, our U-11 girls' ball hockey team that gets to play against Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Massachusetts. Uh, never played. It's the first team from Michigan. We, hopefully, we go out there. If we lose, I can blame it on it's our first game. If we win, we can just say we're that good. So, hopefully, everybody out there wish, uh, your girls, your U-11 Team Michigan a big kudos and hopefully, uh, we take home some hardware. Um, with that, um, I'm gonna close, uh, council communications. And I'm gonna jump right into the consent agenda. And items one through thirteen on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. The other items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on July fifteenth and determined to be non-controversial.
So moved.
Do I have, uh, motion and support?
I'll second that.
Mr. President?
Vice President.
I'd like to actually make a motion to remove item eleven from consent. Support.
I'll accept it, Mr. President.
As well.
Yep.
All right. So, item eleven is being removed. We're gonna add that right to the first of the unfinished business. Um, so, let me rephrase that. So, this would be items one through three, one through thirteen with the exception of eleven. Um, do I have a motion? Does it still say true?
So moved. It's still the same motion.
Okay. Um, any further communication from council on the consent? Anything from the audience? Mr. King?
Yeah, I was just curious. Item nine, the vinyl, the DVC polyvinyl chloride windows going into the senior center. I was hoping somebody would have removed that from the consent agenda so you could talk about it. Um, all the information I could garner, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars replacing windows in a hundred-and-twenty units. It doesn't say how many windows are in each unit. I'm assuming two. I don't know. Maybe there's four, maybe there's six. I don't know. If there are two, those windows are about twelve-hundred bucks apiece. And the thing about vinyl windows is they're, they're just not the best windows, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, vinyl is susceptible to dam, to damage from sun, uh, moisture, and the natural elements. Now, these windows that, if you look at your paperwork, they said they get a, uh, Energy Star rating because they're using, uh, e-glass with argon in between, low-e, low-e glass. And the problem with, uh, vinyl is it expands and contracts seven times faster than glass. So, what happens over a very short period of time with that expansion and contraction, those seals rupture, you lose the argon gas. And it also makes them harder to operate over time because it's just not the best material. Also, vinyl is a terrible insulator. Uh, these are not windows you'd put in your house, so I don't know why you would, uh, give them to the seniors. There are plenty of great window companies out there and that do real windows. I've installed hundreds of windows, built ten houses. You will not find a vinyl window in anything I construct. And there's a good reason for that. So, I was hoping you would, uh, at least ask some questions about this. Two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. I mean, this goes along with the twelve-thousand-dollar hot water heaters. Uh, the federal government just released four-point-three billion dollars in clean energy grants, which, uh, would have gone a long way with heat pump hot water heaters and better energy-efficient windows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Ms. Martin?
I'm racing up here. Uh, yeah, I'm glad you removed number eleven, but I'm just gonna have a little, little, uh, discussion about that. Uh, it's, it's a story I told, uh, when this, uh, vehicle was first ordered. And I'm driving north on, um, Farmington Road and I see this dump truck. And I see a big cloud coming from behind the dump truck. And I'm thinking, well, this guy, the motor's going. This guy's blown the thing up or something. And, um, so I get close enough to it and the guy doesn't have the tarp down. And when Doug Moore stood over there and ordered, said how we needed more dump trucks, I mentioned that story. Since that time, there's been ones I've seen with gravel over the sides, no tarp. The tarp is there. The guy's too lazy to move it down. We, not we, you guys on council approved these things. It's my tax dollar and it's tax dollar of other people in Livonia that buy the best. And you do. You buy the best equipment for these guys. Now, I'm glad that, uh, Doug Moore's boss is sitting there. Maybe he'll take care of it. Maybe Don will take care of it. But at the end of the day, when a dump truck is out and it has a load in the back, that cover needs to be down. It's that simple. It's, this is not rocket science. I don't know how you could allow a driver to even get behind the wheel, okay, without telling him that. Very simple. But I've seen it many, many times. And you would think that the first time, they'd put a stop to it, that I mentioned it. But it's very common. When you see a dump truck and there's stuff in the back, he doesn't have the, the tarp down. It's very frustrating when I see my dollar go to buy, uh, trucks that are worth hundreds of thousands of dollars.
That's right, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for the audience communication on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. The consent agenda passes seven to zero. Um, I accidentally skipped the reports from the mayor and all these other city officials. I'm gonna jump really quick back into that. We had, uh, A through G. I'm gonna start with A and B are just receiving file communications from finance, uh, dated July first, uh, ending, this was April, and then ending June, uh, twenty-twenty-four for the report month. I also have from C, D, E, F, or actually, I'm sorry. C is communication from the Department of Parks and Recreation dated July second, two thousand twenty-four. Fee chase is approved by the Parks and Recs Commission for the last two quarters of two thousand twenty-four. And then items D, E, F, and G are all from our city clerk. These are all in reference from June third. This is Clarenceville School Districts for the collection of district taxes. This is Oakland Schools ISD regarding the collection of district taxes, uh, from the PRDA regarding the district taxes and School Craft College. These are all receiving files. And we are now going to move on to unfinished business, which is now gonna start with number eleven. Let me jump back to it, which is the item we pulled off the consent agenda, is a request for authorization to purchase one dump truck through the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works. Council?
Mr. Chair.
Do we have a motion just to set it up?
Yeah, sure. Support? Do I need, or maybe?
We've been approving.
I can make a motion for approving.
And support.
There you go.
All right. So, uh, Vice President with the motion, uh, Councilwoman Bazinski with the support. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, so honestly, my reason for removal from the consent agenda, just to explain, I had some questions about this purchase, uh, request. And I thought I had asked for it to be on regular at the previous study meeting. I think Councilman Toye actually put it on consent, uh, but perhaps I did not or wasn't heard. So, regardless, we can handle that now. And that's why I'm doing this. Um, my confusion and concern actually came because at the May twentieth regular meeting, we actually approved the purchase of a dump truck. And then come to find out, uh, when Mr. Farrell came before us on July fifteenth, they told us that they didn't purchase a dump truck. There was a mix-up with the order. They purchased state truck instead. Um, and so, I just had some questions about that. I just wanted some clarification. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Roroff. He actually reached out to me. And, uh, Mr. Moore, who also sent us all a letter, kind of explained that. But I just thought to get on the record, if Mr. Moore or Mr. Roroff wanted to come up and explain, we could just kinda put this to bed, so to speak, and then...
Yeah. What, if you'd like to speak on the item and...
Just kinda let us know what happened. We just want to make sure the money that we allocated in May was, was that used completely for the state truck?
Sure.
And, uh, are we kinda net neutral on this?
Mr. Moore?
Good evening. Evening, council. Doug Moore with DPW. Uh, the state truck soon has been ordered.
Okay.
And it's, we actually had two in last year's budget. One of them was cut because of funding. And it's, we actually had two in last year's budget. One of them was cut because of funding. The truck that was ordered in May, it was mistaken, will replace the second truck that should have been, we would like to have ordered at the same time, in the budget. This dump truck, the Parks dump truck that is this one, is the dump truck that we're asking for.
Gotcha. And it seems like this new dump truck is a much bigger one as well.
Yes, it will work better for the park maintenance department.
Less runs, probably save us money over time.
Yes. The park supervisor and the fleet maintenance manager work together and ordered a good piece of equipment.
Okay. And so honestly, I have no problem with the purchase of the state truck or the dump truck, to be honest. I can see in the packet the demonstrated need. Parks obviously needs this. Honestly, my concern was just the goof up, and I just wanted to make sure we were being transparent. As council, our job is to be the fiscal stewards of the city budget. And so we have to watch and make sure everything, you know, is going through, as said. And so that was really it. This is a quarter million dollar purchase almost. So we just wanted to get some clarification. And that's really why I pulled it off consent, just so you had the opportunity to kind of explain what happened.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Councilwoman Bazinski?
Since we have you, I thought I'd also ask, you know, with these new vehicle purchases, do we have a vehicle maintenance plan that we follow for them? I mean, obviously, wear and tear, there's things that come up. But in general, is there a regularity where we do tire rotations, check for alignment, oil changes, those kind of regular standard maintenance items that we do with our own personal vehicles that we have standardized for these new purchases to make sure that they last as long as they can?
Yes, we do. Our city work system has, all the equipment is in city works. It's set up by every, I think, three times a year. They're on lists to be, that are generated every month. The equipment goes into fleet maintenance. Either our mechanics deal with it or it gets shipped out to one of the vendors in Livonia that we work with.
To the point about using external vendors, do we have vacancies in the fleet maintenance department?
Yes, we do.
How many? Or are those jobs currently listed?
The jobs, the jobs are listed. There are five equipment mechanics that we need.
Is the hiring concerned applicant, or is it the pay rates or a combination?
Combination. It's quality of applicants, it's number of applicants, it's pay. We are fighting in a small pool, and there aren't very many fish. These, we've interviewed people that are using us as bargaining chips at their current jobs.
And I guess, again, my only other question is, would you know roughly percentage-wise how much we're outsourcing to external vendors at this point in terms of service maintenance as a result of this?
I don't know specifically. 80%, 90%? It would be a guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience on item number 11? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right. We're moving on to the official unfinished business, starting with item number 14, which is a block party request that comes to us with Wafa De Naro to be held on Saturday, August 10, 2024, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Huff Street between Ladywood and Kingsbury Streets. Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Toy?
I don't see anyone coming up, but I think this has been done before. It's kind of a housekeeping manner. Okay. Well, then I'll offer an approving.
I'll second that.
So we have an approving from Toy. Councilman Jolly has the second, and I'll have the fourth.
Yeah, just very briefly, we know Wafa De Naro. She does a lot for our community. I've been on this street. I've been on her block before. I know several of the neighbors. And I know this is a standard thing that happens. And I know that they will act appropriately. So I'll offer the approving at this time.
Perfect.
Mr. President?
Councilman Donavick?
I'd just like to note that this is the second time that the petitioner has not come before the city council. We can't create this precedent where you ask for an item, the city council has deliberate over it, and then you don't show up to the meeting. That's happened a few times now. That is not becoming of our council, and that's not right. I'll be in support of it because it has happened in the past. But you don't not show up to a job interview. You do not not show up to a city council meeting. If you have an agenda item on the agenda, you should be here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number 15 is a request for council approval on a proposed lot split. This comes to us from the Department of Assessment for property located on the south side of Eight Mile Road west of Newburgh and east of I-275 in the north, or actually northeast section, in section 6. This will waive the deficiency in lot area requirements relative to parcels A and B. This was discussed in detail at our last study meeting. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Donavick?
I'll offer an approving.
Support?
Support.
Approving and support from Morgan?
Morgan.
All right. Do we have any further communication from council?
Just real quick, Mr. President, this makes sense. We need more residential in our community. And these are unique lots. And I think we have to be creative with some of our remaining parcels that are buildable for new single-family residential homes, more harmonious as opposed to a commercial building or something else that will be vacant in a few years, unfortunately. So looking forward to some nice new homes in our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Vice President?
Thank you. I'm in support as well. The width and depth are compliant with minimums. It's a 75 by 150 are the minimums, which it's just that the 15,000 square foot is not. But really, 75 by 150 is 11,250 square feet, which these are both bigger than that anyway. So just in case anyone's wondering, how much are they under the minimum? They're really not when you look at the width and the depth.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bazinski?
I'm not gonna support this rezoning requirement. I, you know, thought on it hard. I've looked at the space. I just think it would be better suited for split for two lots. The third lot, though it's the biggest, it doesn't feel harmonious, you know, to the house nearest to it. So I appreciate the need for new housing and the plan. I just think a two lot, or a lot split that would create two lots opposed to three would be better suited for this area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Good evening. Name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Barbara Baumann, 20469 Meadowview Street. And I live in Livonia Hills Estates. I came to the last meeting, but left at 10 o'clock. And you guys, so we didn't get any information at all. Me and my neighbors left before you got to our, to this lot thing. But most of the people in Livonia Hills Estates really are not for this at all. It ruins the look of our neighborhood. All the houses are on large lots, mostly ranches. And we haven't gotten any schematics or anything. We don't know what it's gonna look like. We haven't gotten anything. We would like plans or diagrams.
So I can tell you that a lot of the information is in these council packets that are published online. If you click the packet, and then I'm sure if we reach out to Mr. Tormino or our engineering department, they might be able to, through even a FOIA request, you could find some of this. But they're right under our council packets. If you click the item.
Okay, there's a lot of elderly people in my neighborhood. They don't go online.
Okay. In the worst case, if you could, is there's a card right next to you, right there?
I don't see any card.
Is there a council card?
Nope.
I'm gonna, we'll have this handed over to, and we're gonna refill that. But send a note to Councilwoman Bazinski. We'll see if we can get you the PDF packet.
Okay.
And that way you can disperse as you need to, if that's okay.
Yeah, because we know nothing.
Yeah, we'll get you the packet.
And we just wanted to get a petition going. I don't know if that makes any difference, but 90% of the people in our neighborhood do not want this happening. We'd rather wait to see, okay, maybe a commercial building will go up. But right now, we don't want three houses.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming. Yeah, feel free, and we'll make sure we get that information.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Bazinski?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
No.
Councilmember Jolly?
No.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President McCullough?
No. The item is defeated. Moving on to item number 16 is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission. It's an appeal of the denial of the petition 2024-04-02-07 submitted by Health Vista LLC requesting waiver use approval to operate a massage establishment at 33242 Seven Mile Road, located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Farmington and Mayfield in the southeast section, section 3. This was denied by the City Planning Commission on May 14, 2024, and appealed at a public hearing held on July 22, 2024. Counsel?
I'll move to nine.
I'll support the denial.
We have a denial from Toy, supported. Counsel? Is there any speaking on this?
Mr. President, I'll just say that I will not be, well, I will support the denial. I'm not in support of the waiver, as I do not think that there is a compelling reason to do so in regards to market demand and the usage in our community.
Well, we have a motion, counsel. Anything further? Is there any comments from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote on the denial?
Did you want to, excuse me, one second. Do you want to give the petitioner opportunity to speak?
Would you like to speak on this, now that we have a motion? This is, if you'd like to speak on the topic, right now, we do have a denial and support. That is the motion that's here. If you'd like to say anything, you can. If you don't want to, you don't have to.
We can answer any questions if we...
Okay. If you'd like to ask some questions, well, or you'll have audience communication. Yeah, feel free. Name and address if I could, and then...
Okay. And so I'm the realtor of the owner, who's coming to get support or denial. I want to hear the answer. And address is 49525 Cherry Hill Road, Canton.
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to say or not? Right now, we do have a denial and we do have support for it. That's gonna be the motion that's gonna be most likely headed to the clerk.
Yeah. So I think for the people who like to denial for this, for this proposal, would like to see whether you have any questions that is unanswered. And we are happy to address any, anything.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none. That's, yeah, if you would like to, no questions, I'm gonna hand it over to our clerk to take the vote.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item fails seven to zero. So the item, it did get denied. So that is, that is the, you'd have another chance to speak if you would like to in the next meeting, on our study meeting at the beginning of it. But right now, that is the motion that's been carried. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 17. This is considered the approval of the issuance of refunding bonds. No, economist comes to us from the Economic Development Corporation of the City of Livonia in reference to Madonna University, pursuant to the requirements of Act 338. Counsel?
Mr. President, I will offer an approving.
Support.
Mr. President, item 17 is, is not really anything to do with the City of Livonia taking out bond money or utilizing funds in any way. This is a, well, for lack of a better way of putting it, it's a refinancing of bonds that were issued to Madonna University under the requirements of those bonds. The city had to be an inactive player in regards to approving them for purposes of the requirements of the bonds. But there is no debt to be inquired by the City of Livonia, does not refinance the Livonia debt, but rather is just a housekeeping matter for Madonna University. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly, for that background. Counsel, any further communication? Seeing none. Audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. The motion carries seven to zero. We're gonna move on to our new business. And item number 18, which is a request to approve a settlement, comes to us from the Department of Law for the MMRMA claims in connection with basement floodings at two homes on Rensselaer Street. Are you taking this, Carter?
Sure. So...
Mr. President? I'm sorry.
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
We have approving from Jolly, support from Toy. The floor is yours. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. So earlier this year, two residents had flooding in their basements, apparently caused by backups in our system that were, you know, either prompted by city work or just a failure of the city system. Both of them sustained relatively major damage to their basement. One of the claims is being recommended by MMRMA for settlement for $24,000 roughly. And the other one is a little bit more than that. It's about $36,000. So that's where you get the total of that $60,000 claim that we're being asked to settle here and again. MMRMA, our insurer, has been through these claims thoroughly. They, this is their recommendation in terms of the settlement amount.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. President, as this is the recommendation of our municipal insurer, I think it's appropriate to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any further comments? Audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. That concludes our regular agenda. I'm gonna now go back to the audience for items that were not on this agenda. If you'd like to come and speak on that. Seeing none. I'm gonna go back to counsel. I'm sure councils, oh, yes. We almost, we almost missed it.
I know. I couldn't get up fast enough.
You're fine. Name and address.
Yes. My name is Marsha McLean, and I live at 20075 Edgewood. I'm new to these procedures, so bear with me. On the consent agenda, number six, is that, is that now going to be, going to the future committee of the whole?
Yes.
Okay, where it's gonna be a single?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So we just throw that in the consent. It gets voted on as kind of a, you know, non-controversial. But with that motion that was made to send that to committee from that study meeting, now we'll add, so the committee of the whole date, I think, is set. It's all gonna be loaded up online, too.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't quite sure. I was getting confused as to where this went.
And we're probably gonna have it right here, just because we're thinking there'd be some people there.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. No, thanks for coming out tonight. Anything further from the audience?
Motion, no jury.
Who's supporting that?
Support.
See you in 10 minutes. Triple book.